Hello, I'd like to welcome everyone to Elizabethan City Schools, what month are we? April Board of Education meeting for a moment, I couldn't remember where we were. Thanks everyone for coming out tonight. We've got several people to be recognizing, so I will tell you, there'll be a moment, I'll let, give you guys a cue, let you disappear, you're welcome to stay, but I completely understand if you don't want to. So I'll let you know when we're going to do that. If everyone would please rise, we're going to have the pledge of flag in a moment of silence.
As we pause for a moment of silence, I ask that you think of, first of all, Ms. Penny May, who lost her mother recently, she teaches at TA Duggar. Also, certainly to think about Mrs. Brittany May, who is a daughter of Sharon Eggers at Harrow McCormick, who is seriously ill. Also, certainly the loss of Dr. Wondell's granddad. Also, we have a report that Ms. Jenny McGee, former administrative assistant here, is seriously ill. And also, we want to think about Mr. Randall Little, who broke his ankle, among other things, bless his heart, and we want to think about them. Thank you.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, where we sustain one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Seth Malone and his family will come forward at this time.
It's my privilege to introduce Seth Malone, his family, and Coach Shipley. I'm going to read this, because this is impressive. Seth Malone, who was an Elizabethan High School athlete in wrestling, he is the first state medalist for Elizabethan High School in nearly a decade, and the first medalist under the new A/AA alignment, which began with this season of competition. He placed sixth in the 106-pound classification. Congratulations. I'm going to hand this over to you. We're going to do a picture afterwards, but we'll go ahead and let you talk.
I just want to say, I'm really proud of Seth and his hard work. He put in a lot of work, a lot of effort to accomplish what he did this year. He also finished fourth in our region this year, which our region also contained three of the top four teams in the state. So he had a tough road just to get to the state tournament this year. And he wrestled a lot of the year at 113, and a lot of people know, it's really hard in wrestling, because you have to weigh in the day of every competition. You know, it'd be really hard on basketball players and football players if whatever weight they said they were at the beginning of the year, they had to step up on the scales right before they played, and have to weigh that weight. And Seth made the decision about halfway through the year to drop from 113 to 106. And small guys, it's really hard to lose a little bit of weight. A guy like me, I can stand to lose about 20 pounds and be okay. Two pounds for Seth is a chore in and of itself, and so to put in the time and the extra work that it took to just get down to weight was impressive. He finished the year with a very impressive record, and first state medalist in nine years, I think Zach Potter was the last state medalist. It was a really, I think, tough transition for a lot of guys, and me being a first-year coach, and they've been with their third coach in three years, and so for Seth to stick through everything and overcome a lot of adversity, it was really impressive to see what he did this year.
I'm sorry, Ms. Howard. Yes, we do, because you deserve it.
We want to recognize Judy Howard for her excellence as a teacher for us for many years at Elizabethan, and then also at her most recent job, which was an academic interventionist at Elizabethan High School. Her plaque says, Judy Howard for exceptional efforts as an academic interventionist at Elizabethan High School, thus positively affecting the school graduation rate and placing students in hopeful circumstances. Thank you from the board, and from all of us who've worked with you over a number of years, and what you've meant to thousands of students who have come through Elizabethan High School. Thank you for all you've done.
Now, time for citizens to speak in accordance with Board Policy 1.404. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, we'll move on. I want to say a thank you for Councilman Tester for being here. Dr. May is on his way, he delivered a baby, I think they said, in Kingsport, so he's en route, we told him to take his time, we'll be fine till he gets here. Time to approve the consent and regular agenda, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, can I have a second?
I'll sit.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I'd like to have just one thing added to the minutes, under last month's march minutes, under regular agenda, where we approved the CRS Advanced Technology for Contract. And I asked several questions, and two of them, when I looked back over it, I thought, really should be put in there in case we needed to use them for reference later on. One is that they assured us that they would stay into 398-340 bond money to build the stadium, and then that they would-
I think you're talking about GRC as construction manager, not CRS Advanced Technology.
Oh, did I get, did I go up too far?
Yeah, it's one of those.
Yeah, I'm going to construction managers, thank you, thank you very much. I had highlighted all over the place. So, the 398-340, that we'd be sure, they said they would stay within that amount of money, and then not to have any change orders, and that no amendments for change orders, and they assured us that that would not happen. So I thought, you know, later we might need those, and they're not documented anywhere.
I think maybe we need to double-check on all that before we add anything to the minutes. I'm not remembering all of that, I know you have excellent recall on these things, but talking about the change orders and things like that, I don't know, I don't remember.
Yeah, I remember asking that one very definitely, because several had been given.
You just want it documented that you asked those questions?
That's all I want, yes, thank you.
Okay, so we want to change, you'd like to add that. I also want to make a couple of, I'd like to ask if it is okay with the board if we take agenda items off of regular agenda items nine, 10, and 11, and we combine them, if you don't mind. All three have the same certification, all three are diagnosticians, so-
There's four.
Oh, there's four?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, eight, nine, 10, and 11, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So if we can do that, then that way, I know that Ms. Armstrong's wanting to leave, so if we could, if everyone's okay, we'll combine those four. And then on regular agenda item 12, there is a correction, so Mrs. Perkins has given us the correction, so we'll just make note that we're going to be using corrected rather than the one that's in your regular agenda. Is that okay with everybody? Did you say, Ms. Armstrong, did you want to leave 15 on the board agenda?
No, I said we'd take that one off.
Okay, and then Ms. Armstrong, we're going to remove agenda item 16.
I have a question. Item number 12, were you including it, is that the one on the physical therapy?
Yeah, we're just using the correction instead of-
Oh, you're going to use the correction instead, yeah, because I do have some questions.
Yeah, no, we're just going to talk about, we're just using the correction.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Item on the floor is to approve regular consent agenda, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all opposed? Thank you. Mr. Alexander?
I'd like to say several things before we go into the personnel update, and first of all, I thank Ms. Raider for including the picture of the actual ribbon-cutting of the two ball fields at Junior High, in a driving rainstorm there, including Mr. Tester was there. We had 21 people there under the umbrellas, and that's quite a showing for, and that is a nice facility, and we're just, we're thankful that those people were able to be there. Next, I'd like to commend Ms. John Hutchins for his handling multitudinous bus concerns, and that's been since the sugaring incident, and that's concerns that involve buses themselves and bus drivers. So we appreciate that, Mr. Hutchins, I don't know anybody else who could have done it as well as you did. Also, I would like to commend Ms. Marcia Taylor, Ms. Hannah Wilson, Mr. Eddie Pleas, along with all those people on the school level, who have planned and worked diligently on preparation for the park testing, which today has been postponed at least until the 2015-16 school year. I salute their efforts, and I share their frustrations, okay, but we appreciate all that they have done. Now, to the personnel update, on new hires, Jessica Green, TA Duggar Special Education Teacher, effective 331. Angelina Hathaway, EHS Part-Time Assistant to Teacher, effective 331. Mary Tapp, EHS Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher, effective 331. Jennifer Snodgrass, TA Duggar Cheerleading Coach, effective 401. Ryan Presnel, TA Duggar Assistant Baseball Coach, effective 401. William Dugger, ESP Child Care Worker, effective 414. Also, Kylie Whaley, ESP Child Care Worker, effective 414. Kristen Taylor, ESP Child Care Worker, effective 62. Now on the next page, Johnny Ray Hayes, Assistant Wide Bus Driver, effective 51. Now we have resignations, Regina Orr, West Side Lunchroom Monitor, effective 331. Kimberly Haney, TA Duggar Cheerleading Coach, effective 42. Kenneth Joyner, Assistant Wide Bus Driver, effective 411. Leslie Colbert, EHS Assistant to the Teacher, effective 52. Diana Flanagan, TA Duggar Assistant to the Teacher, effective 523. Jessica Carpenter, East Side Teacher, effective 526. Now, leaves of absence, Angela Peters, EHS Data Manager from 325 to 56. Timothy Crowe, ECS Maintenance Worker from 326 to 57. Brittany May, Harrow McCormick Assistant to the Teacher from 328 to 512. Then we go on to retirement, gay folks, East Side Teacher, effective 526, 14, and I believe, but which one do we miss? Okay, leave of absence, Angela Peters, EHS Data Manager, 325 to 56, and I think I've read that, haven't I? I beg pardon?
Randy Littler.
Ooh, ooh, second page. Faux pas number six, okay, I apologize, folks. Randall Little, TA Duggar Principal, as we talked about with a broken ankle, from 411 to 417. Thank you for assisting me, carrying me through.
Okay. So many papers up here. It's time for reports by board members, anybody have anything they want to share?
I just want to make a statement or two, since I'm leaving right now, to get back, to get to my church, and it wasn't hard to see which my priority was, and I hate, hate to use that word to be read it, but I had to do a priority.
No, that's perfectly fine.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to Mardi Thursday. Okay. Thanks, let's see, Richard Van has helped me so much today, believe it or not, I love Richard, but I don't tell him that. I had asked for a paint-
Been documented.
I do too. I'm not going to let him even answer any of my questions. But he assures me that the paint job is going to be done, and the stadium will look a lot better by the summer.
They paint it every year, so rest assured it will, yes.
And so that was a great relief when I heard that, after looking at that this past week, it looked so bad. Okay, and I knew that we, in the capital plan, that it's not scheduled for two years to be demolished at 250,000, so I knew that we had to do something for that, saying to make it look better. The only item, after I studied my packet very carefully, that I did not agree with is the change that Danny Smith made in the physical therapy contract, the compensation. And first he had $60, and then after finding, doing some research, I found that you had to have it in units, and he did, and I appreciate him transferring that over to the units, but it's still an increase in money, and I can't agree with that at all. And I think there needs to be a little more detail.
Well, I think we're going to have, I know you want to talk about that now, but we really probably-
Well, I'm going to leave, and I just wanted you all to know how I felt about that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Other than that, I don't expect any discussion at this point.
Okay.
Okay, is that it?
I know, is that it?
You can go with me.
I would love to, but I'll leave, I'll hit mine tomorrow night. My trip service will be tomorrow night.
Whenever, as long as you get it.
Exactly right. Have a lovely evening. All right, so we are going to be combining, first of all, anybody else have anything to say before we move on? Okay.
Can I apologize for being late?
You delivered a baby, there's no problem necessary.
I was in Houston Valley, I'm sorry, it's just a long drive.
We're happy you're here.
I appreciate your understanding.
On behalf of, I'm sure, the mother, she was happy to have you there, so we're all good. Okay, so we are going to be taking items eight, nine, 10, and 11, combining them, so sit back, here we go. Item on the floor is to approve the contract between John Angelopoulos ED, DBA Human Development Counseling, and Elizabethan Board of Education from June 1, thank you, 2014 through May 31, 2017. Approved contract between Dana Skaggs MA, DBA New Day Psychological Services LLC and Elizabethan Board of Education from June 30, 2014 through June 30, 2015. Approved amendment to contract between Kim Hall and Elizabethan Board of Education for the third year of a three-year contract expiring June 1, 2015. And approved contract between Susan E. Bruner MED and Elizabethan City Schools for the 2014-2015 school year. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Dr. G.
This is just our yearly contract for psychological services that we currently do. We, there's really no more evaluations, we have a number of evaluations, and we have several people, they're all doing well for us, they serve a great purpose and service to the school system, each one of them, and so, you know, basically, we had to meet last week and do a little revision, just from the standpoint that state requirements are changing, so we met last week, and they all put their contracts forward to be considered again this year, so it's just kind of housekeeping.
So these are folks that we're currently using?
We're all, basically renewing contracts for them to come back and-
They're one-year contracts, I noticed that Ms. Hill's a three-year contract.
Even though it says a three-year contract, the board considers it every year, and so you can, there's an escape clause for the board, as well as the employee, if they would like to, the contract employee, so we have, it's between 30 and 60 days, depending on what happens, so if we weren't happy with that, we have a way to terminate the contract, or the contract employee can terminate it too, so at any time.
Anybody else? If yes. Item on the floor is to approve contract between John Angelopoulos, that will, contract will run from June 1, 2014 through May 31. Approved the contract between Dana Skaggs, that contract will run June 30, 2014 through June 30, 2015. Approved amendment to contract between Kim Hall, that is the third of a three-year contract expiring June 1, 2015, and approved contract between Susan Bruner and Elizabethan City Schools 2014-2015 school year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thank you, motion carried. Next is to approve contract between Physical Therapy Services PA and Elizabethan City Schools from the June 1, 2014 through the May 31, 2017. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Now, Dr. Gardner, you want to address, I think Ms. Baker has a question to you.
Go ahead.
Okay, down here I noticed it had, rate of compensation for services shall be $20 per unit of service. Where applicable, PTS will bill the insurance of the student for the visit rather than ECSS, but I know with our athletes, they do have insurance with the school, and of course, we don't want both of them being billed, and we have, well, I've had a few parents that called saying that their insurance was charged, as well as they felt the school's insurance was charged, so that's one of the reasons that I am voting against it, because, you know, if he uses one, he shouldn't use the other.
Okay, that's explain, explain how that works, because I think there may be a misunderstanding in that. Number one, it doesn't have anything to do with athletics, so that's, that's probably the first thing that we need to consider and look at. Number two, is the fact that parents have an opportunity, when they come to the school system at an IEP meeting, to sit down with the teacher, and they meet as a group, and they decide what therapies are best for the student. Some parents choose to have the extra therapies done during the school day, because it's beneficial to them. They may not have transportation to take the child to an off-site location to have the therapy done there. They're given a form, and they can opt out or opt in to that part of the program, so that's, that's the reason that we offer that. It's a big savings to the school system, because instead of billing the school system, that bills their, their ten care for that service, they would have to be eligible to give that anyway, and so that offsets costs for us, and it's a win-win for the parents and for the school system both, so that's why we do it that way. We do not have to pay for anyone to do the medical billing for that, Danny Smith and his crew does all that for us, and so really for us, you know, we may end up seeing them an extra time during the week, but it's a help to the parents, and so we've offered that service now, since we've been with them for quite some time, so, and the little overage that he gets, he may make $25 through ten care for the same service that he's giving here to a child, but that kind of offsets some of the travel costs and things that he might have for that, so he makes a little bit more money there, but we also have, do not have to do the billing, so we would have to pay someone to do that, so it helps us out too.
This is just for the physical therapy and services that are provided to students who have IPs and things like that?
That's right.
This isn't like, if you get hurt, you go to his office for therapy, this is for in-school?
These are, these are in-school services, occup- These are, these are in-school services, occupational and physical therapy services.
Okay, I have another question. So, you're saying that he does not work with some of athletes that get hurt?
He does do that, but that's completely a separate.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, that's not their contract.
Okay, but you're saying he does not be a both?
No.
Okay.
He, he bills, he'll either bill one or the other. You know, in past years, we saved around $30,000 doing it that way.
What I would presume happens is, what typically happens when someone has double coverage, you bill the primary coverage and then whatever's left, you bill the secondary, and often, your secondary will pick up where your primary doesn't. This is kind of the same thing where your primary coverage is what your individual coverage is, if it's, say, it's ten care, or let's say it's Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Yeah.
You would bill them, and it would apply to their deductible or whatever, and then Danny Smith would also bill the other, but it would be noted that this is a secondary coverage. Now, secondary plan would sometimes cover your, your deductible for people who are double covered, and sometimes it won't. I think that's what Danny's doing, is he is billing them first and then gets what he can, and then what he, whatever it doesn't cover, the school system picks up the bill through the contract at that rate, $20.
I understand what you're saying, but I've had several parents that called and they felt that he was billing both situations, but in any case, that's one of the things that I was upset about and concerned about, and I questioned the parents that called and asked them to check with their insurance company, but I've had that several times, so that's.
Can you answer what a T?
I'm, I'm.
No, I want to ask him what a Tennessee, TRMT, it's a, I forgot what it stands for, but it comes from the state of Tennessee, and when they go for an athletic injury, Danny Smith's office will typically send out that from Tennessee. The state of Tennessee sends a form to the parent who is supposed to attest to whether they have insurance or not. If they have insurance, they're supposed to provide that to the state of Tennessee, but if they're not, my understanding is the state of Tennessee picks that up.
That's correct.
Okay, that's a separate issue from this, but just to understand the process.
But we give that to every parent during the IEP meeting, when they do their initial evaluation, and when we do a three-year reevaluation, we give that to every parent, and they basically comply and sign that. It's meant to reduce costs overall and to try to make sure that they're keeping a level of service. Some students do have other services provided through the health system, nurses and other after-school hours, but we kind of just focus on what can happen here and whether we can make the therapy better. You know, sometimes that happens over the summer, it can help our students with that, so. But typically, we save anywhere from $25,000 to $40,000 a year in our own costs a year, and we're still able to give all that service to the students. And we show that in a monthly statement I sent to Ms. Armstrong, how much we're saving.
Dr. May, just for clarification too, since you made the statement you did, you're correct in the process, but I do want you to be aware that both athletic directors at the junior high and the high school work with a coaching staff, who then work with Cindy Walker in our office, who is our insurance clerk and our liaison with the state, and together, they all work. So, I think that if any parent had a question, you know, they certainly could, you know, come to see Ms. Walker, have a question, or either athletic directors could answer that question if they feel like, you know, a mistake has been made somewhere along the line.
Okay.
And one more, did we ask for other bids on this, or we just used them since we've been using them?
Did we ask for other bids on that?
Uh-huh.
He's renewing, is that correct?
Huh?
He's on a renewal.
Oh, okay.
So, but he has not asked for a rate increase. It's been, since I've been here, it's been seven years about, his first year we started using him, and this is the first time, and like I explained to Ms. Armstrong earlier today, gas and everything else, he has to pay their salary, and you know, seven years is a long time, and he's asking for $2 of, you know, billable unit of service, and that's, that's pretty small compared to what we could be four times that amount having a non-local contractor do it, so.
But, but we did not, we did not ask for bids on this, it's just renewing this contract?
That's correct.
Okay.
My understanding.
So, maybe the next time it rolls around, we can do that.
I would have to double-check that, Ms. Baker, but I am not a hundred, I'm not totally sure to tell you that it absolutes. I believe this is the first, this would be the first year of a new proposed three-year contract. I think the current contract ends the third year of the previous three-year contract that we were involved in, and that's why it's stated that way on what is proposed to you. People notice it starts this year and ends three years from now. But again, as Dr. Gardner told you earlier, even though we're looking at it as a three-year package, so to speak, the board has the opportunity to vote each year on whether renewing one year, two year, year three, or three year, a three year.
And the other benefit is, of course, that when he does a three-year contract, he's expecting to keep that same amount of money, and it's a fixed cost for me and my budget. I know how much I'll be paying him for three years, so that helps too.
And it is a professional service.
Absolutely.
May I ask any more questions? Thank you, Dr. G. Item on the floor is approved contract between Physical Therapy Services PA and Elizabethan City Schools from June 1st, 2014 through May 31st, 2017. Ms. Perkins, would you call the role?
Ms. Baker?
No, I would like to have had bids for, you know, maybe some others, so mine, no.
Mr. Isaacs?
Yes.
Dr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Brewer?
Yes, thank you, motion carries. Next item is approved amendment to contract dated March 20, 2014 with GRC Construction Manager for work on the new athletic playing field at TA Duggar Junior High School. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, can I have a second?
I'll save it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Van Haas.
If you notice, I think you have some drawings, it's on attachment.
14.
14, thank you, thank you. The, basically, what we're requesting for your consideration is to amend the contract agreement between GRC that you approved last year, or, excuse me, last year, last what, last month, struggling too, last month, for them to do the work at the high school on the two projects, to extend that to include some additional work at, potential work at the TA Duggar fields. There is some concern that the, the playing fields may not be ADA compliant without some sidewalk addition, and that's what the, the main part of this work would be. We could probably, as, if you notice there on the design from, the drawing from Mr. Weems, we could probably do less concrete and be compliant, but it, it's our feeling that if we're going to do it, we need to try to do it right, and, and so basically, it would pave the area now that's gravel, plus a little bit further down, down the, the baseball third baseline and the softball first baseline. It would also take into account some drainage downspouts from dugouts and the scores tower, and so it'd really dress that area. We also think, you know, when you have children around areas like that and you have gravel, there's always the tendency to pick those up and, you know, throw those, those kinds of things, so I think this will also help maybe curtail some, some vandalism as well. Also included in the package is we would get some pricing on some lighting. I know Ms. Armstrong had another question about that, and so they will also seek some additional bids on that work. So, the only thing you'd be approving tonight would be to extend, do an amendment to the contract to allow them to gather some pricing, put these, these two things out for bid, and then they would bring that back to the board, and then you would either approve to do it and select a vendor, or say, you know, we just can't do that. But, but, so that's, that's our recommendation to you. Again, this was included in the original design, but as you know, at the time, the bids came in much higher than what we had anticipated in the funding that we had, and, you know, it may look like we've gone back and we're, you know, we made some kind of mistake or something and not including it to begin with, but, but what I would say is, again, we could do less work, that wouldn't include the scope that we're doing here, but I don't think any of us would be satisfied with that. You would have transitions from concrete to gravel to grass, and, you know, to me, if we're going to make it accessible, it needs to be accessible everywhere to everyone. So, so that's my, that's my, my thoughts on that. And again, GRC being familiar with the project since they did the work, it just kind of makes sense to, to utilize them as well, so.
I agree with you, Richard. It's a situation where we tried to cut some cost and tried to get our budget a little tighter, and after looking at the situation down there, it definitely needs some attention in the grounds and the difference in elevation, kind of surprised that between the two fields, the difference in elevation and slope, it does look a little, I won't say scary, but you know, it's potential for some injuries or something there. You know, we, I think we were doing the best we could on the front end, trying to save some money, but really, it's probably going to cost us more money, because it's probably cheaper to do it while we're already involved in it. But it's a beautiful facilities, I think it's, it's a great thing, and, but the gravel does need some attention. I'm afraid it's going to be a little dangerous.
Right, and I think one thing we were able to do after the fact that initially, we didn't have the funding to do were the dugouts and the scores tower, and you know, again, through a donation by General Shell, made that possible. So, then, once you have those buildings in place, then it really magnifies that gravel around through there. So, it may not have been a big, as big of an issue, you know, had we not been able to do those dugouts and scores tower at that time, so.
It's a really nice looking city, but I would, I think maybe if you and maybe the GRC group could look at that transformer sitting there just behind the curb in the metering, it's kind of an eyesore. You know, I was the one that was really wanting the underground facilities, but I wasn't really expecting that big green transformer sitting there. And aesthetically, if maybe there's some way to, you know, get with the electric system and see what they would allow you to do as far as cosmetic, because you have to agree with this little bit of an eyesore sticking out there, and so if maybe they could look at some bushes or fence or something, maybe to kind of, can't hide it completely, but it's, it's, it has to be there, it's a necessary evil, but it is kind of odd-looking sitting there.
Okay, I'm sorry, as far as some of the drainage, as I say, I hadn't actually set through a whole, whole gang, I have science trouble real bad. Of course, I don't want y'all running out here thinking you can catch something, so I haven't been setting out too much, but in any case, I'd like for you to look at some of the ways that some of that water's draining off, because I've had one or two people mention something about that, as far as the way the water was running off or draining off.
Yeah, as, as with any project, they're, you know, once it's completed, you find those trouble spots, and one area is from the softball field, the third baseline down the slope that Mr. Isaacs was mentioning, some of the field's washing out, and part of this work, they're going to put an additional catch basin there to collect some of that water, and when this concrete is in place, again, all the piping from all the downspouts will be directed to a drain, so that'll be one problem alleviated, and then they'll be able to slope the concrete in a way so that it drains and doesn't drain down onto the, to the baseball field. So, that will be part of what's addressed in this.
Any more questions? Okay, item on the floor is to approve contract, excuse me, wait a minute, wrong thing, approved amendment to contract dated March 20, 2014 with GR Street, GRC Construction Manager for the work on the new athletic playing field at TA Duggar Junior High School. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Last item is approved TSBA District Policy Manual Maintenance and Online Service Agreement from May 1st, 2014 through April 30th, 2017. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Arden.
This is done yearly, and this will address keeping updated the, the TSBA work with board policy. So, this is, this is routine, but it's, it's essential to what we do, and they run the interference of this, and we appreciate that.
Any questions or comments on this? Look at us, all right. Item on the floor is to approve TSBA District Policy Manual Maintenance and Online Service Agreement from May 1st, 2014 through April 30th, 2017. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. A couple of things before we go, if you would, please hang around, we have a paper for some banking, home, housekeeping, so hang around, Ms. Perkins has something for us to sign. Next regularly scheduled board meeting will be Thursday, May 15th, 2014, 6:30 PM in the Mac Pierce Board Room. Next, part of our policy revision schedule will include Section 6, Students, so look over that. Don't forget, we have Honors Day at the high school coming up, lots of things going on there. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Okay, I have one comment. I appreciate the contracts and things that come through, but when there's more than one, or if we're getting bids, I'd like to see all of them, even though I, I respect your recommendations, I would like to see them where I could read through each bid that comes in, and here before, you know, we, we have the ones that you recommend, and you list the ones that you have received, but I would like to have the background information on those, please, in my book list, when we have any other contracts or things that we bid out. I would appreciate it very much.
And again, I think that's available at any time up at the central office, so you are more than welcome to come and look at it.
I'd like to have a copy to read it, please, thank you. So, I'd like to have those copies.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Yes.
Happy Easter.